Along with learning about bliss, which is one of the only freestanding and first one of its kind at LAX.
They're going to be able to get a taste of everything, whether it be body products, whether it be farming products for their body, for their face. They're going to be able to travel with the products. We have a lot of traveling size products. And they're going to be able to recognize the products that they see in the spa.
I mean, this is just amazing. You can't be more relaxed than this.
The duty-free shop also had a Christian Dior pop-up exclusive to LAX. From makeovers and makeup to fragrances and hand massages, it was a pure treat.
So you can actually come to the Tom Bradley Terminal. You can get a makeup lesson. You can get a facial, a mini facial. Again, you can get a massage. You can find products specific to traveling. And you can find gifts.
And with LA's iconic store Fred Segal, it's a true LA experience. Who says you can't be pampered while traveling? Now you can when flying from LAX. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Well, it's a day of recognition for LA firefighters who go into burning buildings and dangerous situations every day to keep Angelenos safe. Anna Marcos takes us to the LA Fire Department's awards event.
It was a day LA Fire paramedic Miguel Mesa will never forget. Two children trapped 30 feet underwater inside a car that had been driven off a pier in San Pedro. He had to rescue the children in waters with zero visibility.
With two children of my own, my heart went out to the kids that were stuck in the car submerged. So I went down, got in the water, and dove as hard as I could to get down to get to them.
Mesa did rescue them, but it was too late. They did not survive. But that act of heroism has earned him a Medal of Valor at the LA Fire Department's yearly awards banquet, the highest award for LA firefighters.
One of the definitions of valor is extreme personal risk. That's what the definition is for that particular award. He displayed that at that instant, and that's why he's getting it.
The 33 firefighters earning awards have organized Christmas toy drives for children, saved people, animals, and even each other from burning buildings, swollen streams, earthquake ruins, and electrified water. This emergency created a recipe for disaster: a car accident, downed power lines, and a gushing fire hydrant with two women lying in the water.
We automatically figured that the water is electrified.
10,000 volts of electricity cycled through the water, but firefighters risked their own electrocution to save the women.
We slid her away off the water, and then the paramedics started working on her.
And then I went in for the second victim.
The victims did not survive, but many do survive because of such heroic deeds.
You have put yourselves in such personal peril to do your jobs so that others could live.
Daniel Apodaca wasn't even on duty when he saved three men whose boat had capsized on a stormy lake.
If I had fallen over, my boat would have blown away, and I would have been right there with them.
But you saved all three?
I managed to get all three guys into the boat.
33 heroes who went beyond the call of duty this past year to make us all a little safer. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Other awards presented were the Medal of Merit, a community service award, special commendations, and a lifetime achievement award, which went to retired Fire Deputy Chief Ronaldo Rojo. Well, are you following Mayor Eric Garcetti on Instagram? If not, you should be. Rasha Goel has more on your mayor's creative side.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti is a busy guy. But even as the mayor of America's second-largest city, he's plugged into the powers of social media. He's a prolific Instagrammer. He was recently dubbed "the mayor of Instagram" by Mother Jones Magazine. His photos provide a new perspective of Los Angeles.
And as mayor, I try to give a little bit of a personal view of Los Angeles: the view from the car of a parade, a neighborhood that maybe a lot of Angelenos haven't been to, a moment of triumph or beauty in my city. So it's kind of a, I don't know, a love song for Los Angeles from your mayor.
Titled #MayorOfInstagram, his pictures were recently on display at Take My Picture Gallery in downtown Los Angeles.
He's a really good photographer. And so we decided that, you know, maybe it's time to take the images off the computer and put them on the wall and really feature his work as a photographer in addition to being the mayor.
Unlike the social media accounts of many politicians, Mayor Garcetti's Instagram belongs to a real human being, one with a hobby interest in photography.
His work is kind of spellbinding.
And for those who didn't want to miss a picture from his personal collection, they are available for purchase for $100 each. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Profits raised from the sale of the work went to the Los Angeles Public Library Photo Collection and Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles. Well, it's always good news when park-poor areas in LA get a little more green put in. Councilmember Karen Price is slowly building up those spaces in his South LA 9th District. Anna Marcos takes us to the latest groundbreaking.
South LA kids will soon get $6 million worth of more park spaces to play in here.
Do any of the children play soccer? Yes, raise your hands. Hi, hi, alright. Well, let me tell you, sometimes soccer fields get tired. Sometimes the grass goes away. Sometimes it rains and it gets muddy. But with this new soccer field, you're not going to have any of those problems.
All this dirt in what was formerly known as South Park will soon become a synthetic soccer field.
Tens of thousands in the area, and there's no green space, very few green spaces. And so that's why this park is so important.
This future synthetic soccer field will save the city of LA 2 million gallons of water a year, and it's hardly synthetic at all. It will be made of green, earth-friendly materials.
It's an organic material, and it's volcanic ash. So it's going to be safe to play on.
But there's more. The park will get walkways, lighting, parking, a newly renovated palm tree parmanade, and something to keep kids cool while they're having fun in the summertime.
Well, we're bringing a water feature back that will be for the children of this area. Nice splash pads going in there that will be nicely designed, where people again be picnicking and recreating underneath those palm trees.
And there are yet more of these projects coming up. Several South LA parks and rec centers will get new playgrounds, new soccer fields, and other upgrades in the next year so that kids in South LA can do what kids at any park love to do: play. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
South Park, by the way, was once an historic park and one of the oldest in the city. Its rec center was built by Paul Williams, once a renowned architect to the stars and a designer of some of LA's most iconic buildings. While new AmeriCorps members take the oath of service, LAFD reveals a test pilot vehicle that does double duty. And one LA City Councilman makes sure residents in his district have a happy Thanksgiving. All these stories in City Beat.
And we'll get things done.
We'll get things done.
Congratulations, America.
Mayor Eric Garcetti administered the oath of service to nearly 100 new members of AmeriCorps who will provide tutoring, college and career counseling to young people at schools and community centers in some of LA's most underserved neighborhoods, from Watts to Pacoima. In an afternoon ceremony held at Los Angeles Police Department Headquarters, Mayor Garcetti welcomed them to a year of service in a program funded by three major grants awarded earlier this year.
And there's an interaction you're going to have with a young person in this year who's going to say something that knocks your socks, that changes your perspective, that makes you just stop in your tracks for a moment to realize and to recognize that this isn't just about what you're going to be giving them, it's about what they are going to be giving you.
The Los Angeles Fire Department recently unveiled its new fast-response vehicle pilot program. LAFD Chief Ralph Terrazza's joined City Councilmembers Felipe Fuentes, Bob Blumenfield, Mitchell Farrell, and other officials at the French Hodgkin Memorial Training Center to introduce two new vehicles, which will have both firefighting and first-response-advanced life support capabilities. The units will serve the North San Fernando Valley and the Central City-Pico Union Echo Park area to provide efficient and flexible fire and emergency medical services in some of the city's busiest areas. The six-month pilot program is designed to measure the impact and effectiveness of these new resources to determine if more vehicles will be deployed across LA.
We are achieving faster response times to emergencies and keeping other fire engines and ambulances available for the next run.
Councilmember Gil Sadio joined with various community groups at Fire Station 13 in Pico Union to pass out turkeys to families in need. Sadio's annual turkey giveaway provides families with a turkey and all the fixins to prepare a full Thanksgiving meal. More than 200 turkeys were donated from the council district office with the assistance of the Los Angeles Fire Department.
It's a little opportunity for us to get back to the community, a community that deserves so much and that has been so supportive.
A holiday tradition returns as downtown LA rings in the holidays with outdoor ice skating all season long. Gil Reyes has more from Pershing Square, which has been transformed into a winter wonderland. Gil?
Well, happy holidays, Yana. Yeah, the 18th straight season for this Pershing Square ice rink, the first of two downtown LA ice rinks. The other one is over at LA Live. And what a way to kick off the season. Of course, there's Snoopy and all these kids.
Good grief, he's back. Snoopy ushers in the most wonderful time of the year at downtown LA's original outdoor ice rink. Miesha Aaron and other kids from the inner city are among this year's first guests. Miesha never gets the chance to lace up the skates back home.
It's South LA. It takes a while before you get to go places like this.
This kickoff ceremony draws professional skaters like Olympian and two-time World Bronze Medalist Tiffany Chin, who loves her holidays LA-style.
Trees, the sunlight, the warmth. Oh my goodness, the warmth.
And of course, there's this 4,500-square-foot rink in front of the Biltmore Hotel. You should see it at night with all the holiday lights aglow, a very festive scene worthy of a Christmas card. Skating admission is $9 per hour. Bring your skates, or if you don't own a pair, you can rent them here for $4. Some of this season's highlights include Holiday Hounds on Ice, where pets are invited, a fundraiser to benefit Children's Hospital, and DJ Thursdays, where you can spin and skate into the night.
It is getting bigger and better every year, and that's due to the great community that we have that rallies with us to spread the word and bring more people.
There will also be a night set aside for LA Singles, a way for bachelors and bachelorettes to break the ice. At Pershing Square, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The rink will remain open till January 18th. For a full rundown of times and programs, visit holidayicrinkdowntownla.com. While magical holiday lights transform the LA Zoo into a winter wonderland, the spotlight shines on Hollywood during the annual Christmas parade and a chance to catch a classic on the big screen. All this and this week's things to do. After going dark in 2009, holiday lights returned to Griffith Park, this time at the LA Zoo. The zoo's fest will find visitors trekking through the front half of the festively illuminated grounds on foot. Though most of the animals will be asleep, you'll be able to see reindeer and sit for a photo with Santa. There's a charming premise that ties everything together. A group of LED monkeys have commandeered a Christmas tree and the zoo's power supply. The glowing animal power cord they've draped across the grounds electrifies everything from the desert floor, laced with lights, to a purple disco ball-filled forest. Check it out at the LA Zoo on now through January 3rd. Actors and television personalities Eric Estrada and Laura McKenzie host the 84th Annual Holiday Christmas Parade. Since 1928, millions of people have come to Hollywood Boulevard for this annual star-studded event, providing the best in family entertainment. Marching bands experienced their own dose of star treatment in the parade's telecast zone when they marched down the biggest red carpet in the world. Bands are a highlight of the parade that also includes celebrities, floats, and giant character balloons. Clay Aiken and Taylor Hicks are among the musical acts scheduled to perform. The parade will make its way down Hollywood Boulevard on November 29th starting at 5:00 PM. For more, visit thehollywoodchristmasparade.org. And here's your chance to revisit the best love story of all time and see Gone with the Wind in all of its glory on the big screen. Southern vixen Scarlett O'Hara, Vivien Leigh, only has eyes for sensitive Ashley Wilkes, Leslie Howard. But wisecracking Hellraiser Rhett Butler, Clark Gable, is determined to win her heart, even if that means surviving the burning of Atlanta, the destruction of Scarlett's beloved Tara, and the overthrow of the Old South itself. Relive the magic of Gone with the Wind on Saturday, November 28th at the Egyptian Theater located at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard. For more, visit americancinematocalender.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
It is Tuesday. Mr. Herman, please don't disrupt the meeting. It is Tuesday, November 24th. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sodio, Inlander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Wezar, Corretz, Corcoria, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corretz moves, Wezar seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led today by Mr. Mike Bonin and our flag salute.
Everybody, please put your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Before we begin, Mr. President, there's a request to continue items 1, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I to January 12th, 2016. Also, there's requests to continue item 2 to December 15th. And also, the Department of Building and Safety reports that item 1A may be received and filed in as much as there has been a recent change in property ownership.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. So let's continue.
And there is a card on the remaining item for item 1.
Okay, and what about item 2?
Item 2 was continued.
All right, so let's move on to the next section.
Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's hold, let's vote now on item 9. So this will just be a vote on item 9. Let us open the roll.
Mr. President?
Mr. Wezar?
This is, item 6 special, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, 6 special for Mr. Wezar?
Yeah.
Any other specials, members? Okay, again, we're gonna vote first on item 9. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, now we'll vote on the remaining items in this section. Any more specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's move on.
Items 11 through 28 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 11, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 27, and 28.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, any specials? Mr. Wezar?
22, please.
22 for Mr. Wezar. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, items 29 and 30 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
So again, without objection, these items are now before this body? Do we have cards?
Cards on item 29.
Okay, let's vote on 30. No specials. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's requests to send item 25 urgent forthwith. Council should vote on that.
Okay, so we're voting on the urgent forthwith. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Corretz, are you ready with your presentation?
Good morning, colleagues, and it's my honor to welcome the best university in Los Angeles and quite possibly the nation to council this morning. Let's give a round of applause to UCLA. Volunteer Day 2015 was UCLA's 7th annual new student service event, which my daughter actually got to participate, I believe, in its first year. On this day, first-year freshmen and new transfer students joined together with continuing undergraduates, graduate students, faculty, staff, alumni, parents, and community members to visit 48 sites across greater Los Angeles. Reaching out to every council district, volunteers gave service at schools, food banks, parks, shelters, senior centers, veterans facilities, and neighborhood areas. UCLA Volunteer Day is one of the nation's largest communicate, community participation events for new students. Participants learn important skills including leadership, task coordination, painting and landscaping, event planning, and more. For some Bruins, this is their first experience in the city of Los Angeles or their first time engaging in community service. And this year, around 5,500 individuals participated. So now I'd like to invite Vice Chancellor Keith Parker to say a few words and share some highlights from this year's Volunteer Day.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Corretz, and Councilmember, Council President Wesson, thank you for allowing us to come in today to commemorate some of our UCLA work and civic engagement. As all of you know, this was our 12th annual UCLA Day in downtown where our volunteers who are doing work around homelessness came and met with each member of the city council or their staff, met with members of the Board of Supervisors and their staff. And so we're also commemorating our work with our 12th annual UCLA Day in downtown. Carmen Healy and Marco Perez have been the coordinators of this year's program along with Yvette Bailey from our community and local government relations staff. They've done an incredible job, and we really thank Councilmember Wezar for participating in a panel with LA County Representative Phil Ansell to talk about both your council response to homelessness as well as the county's response to homelessness. So Councilmember Wezar, thank you very much. As a Bruin who gets lots of UCLA votes in Los Angeles rather than a Berkeley Bear where you get no votes, we appreciate your participation as always. We also, again, want to commemorate our 7th annual Volunteer Day. Volunteer Day is made possible because of the contributions all of you make as council members. You not only provide us with bus support, and you've done tremendous work, 68 of the buses that we needed this year, the council provided, but you also help us identify sites where our volunteers can go and do this important work. Volunteer Day is not the only day, though, that our volunteers are out. We're out in a program we call One Bus One Cause where we will go back to sites and we'll go to new sites. In fact, on Thanksgiving Day, one of our One Bus One Cause efforts will be at the West Los Angeles VA where we'll be doing, we'll be feeding veterans on Thanksgiving Day. So I want to introduce Shannon Reagan Hickman, who is our director of our volunteer center for a few words.
Thank you, Keith. Council President Wesson and members of the city council, on behalf of the staff of the UCLA Volunteer Center and our volunteer leadership teams, I'm pleased to be with you today to say thank you and to share the success of our 7th annual UCLA Volunteer Day. As you'll see in the impact reports we've given you, with 5,495 volunteers participating, the value of the work completed on Volunteer Day totals almost $725,000. But the work doesn't stop after Volunteer Day. We check in with each site after the day to make sure every community partner is completely satisfied with the quality of work, scheduling follow-up projects when needed. And our volunteers don't stop serving. Since that day, 300 volunteers have joined us on a One Bus One Cause project. 52 undergraduates have dedicated hours to tutoring campus employees through our ESL program, Project Spell. Many more have been referred to campus organizations or nonprofits who need assistance. And once they are engaged, we are seeing these Bruins emerge as leaders time and time again. So in fact, the impact of Volunteer Day lasts far beyond the few hours spent on-site that day. In the words of one of the principals at our partner elementary schools, "UCLA left more than murals and new paint. You left my students and families with hopes and dreams. This day of service generated lasting dreams of opportunity for my students." So thank you for your support of UCLA Volunteer Day, from site suggestions to providing transportation to serving on-site with us that day. We look forward to continued partnerships and service that will provide assistance to the people of Los Angeles while also inspiring future civic and community leaders. Go Bruins!
Thank you.
In your bags that are at your desk, you'll find, and Mr. Sodio has displayed his, you'll find a photo from a site in your district where we did a volunteer project. You'll find a T-shirt that is from Volunteer Day and has our sponsors listed on the back. So each of you are on the back of our shirts that went to over 6,000 people as a sponsor. You'll also find, as Shannon mentioned, the impact report on where we were, what we accomplished, and what Volunteer Day really means in terms of service by UCLA. And finally, a cool pair of sunglasses. And so, again, my mother always told me, there's nothing worse than an ungrateful heart. We are very, very grateful to the work that you do and to the work that you help us to do. So as Shannon said, go Bruins! And Mr. Inlander and Mr. Corcorian, who have ties to that other small school on the other side of town, we're gonna kick some butt this weekend. Go Bruins!
You know, Mr. Corretz, we do have some other members that want to speak, so if you'd like for us to go in that direction now, we can.
Please.
Okay, and I just want to say this, thank you for all that you do. It's a pleasure for the council to work with you. And then just a word about Mr. Parker, Keith Parker, you've just been, it's, not only are you a class act, you really care, it's really obvious, and you've been very helpful to most of the members seated around this horseshoe and some that are serving in the Assembly and in Congress, so I give you a big salute. You rarely get recognized for all of the good work you do. Can we give Keith Parker a round of applause? He's a good leader. He's a good leader with a good team. Mr. Rue, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise today to recognize the 7th Annual UCLA Volunteer Day, but any chance I get to recognize my alma mater, UCLA, just want to say how great the school is, how I'm so fortunate that I was able to attend. And I think we were just talking with the Vice Chancellor, I think there are six members who attended UCLA? Almost a, almost a majority here at the city council, so we just need two more graduates from UCLA, and you guys can get whatever you want. But I just, I'm so thankful to have been, had the privilege to attend the finest public institution of UCLA, and I owe everything that I am today to UCLA and anything I could do to support. And thank you, Mr. Corretz, for bringing UCLA to our attention today. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wezar?
Thank you. Just briefly, UCLA has really left a lasting impact on Second Street Elementary School in Bull Heights. It showed those students that people are here that care about the school. But not only that, the volunteerism and the materials, but as we were talking with Keith earlier, it really left an impression on the students about what is possible and that college is possible for many of these students. So thank you so much. Keith and I have this ongoing joke that my undergraduate institution, UC Berkeley, that there's not many voters in my district. And Keith, I think I told you the story that it's true what you say. I get more votes because I went to UCLA than I went because I went to Cal. But when we do, when we run, we run polls, and we usually ask, who are you voting for? And sometimes we get qualitative information, like, why are you voting for this person? On two occasions, people responded because he went to UCLA. So you're right, I do get votes because I went to UCLA. Thanks for all your work. Volunteer Day is incredible. Thank you so much.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Corretz, for highlighting the work of the UCLA family. And to my constituent in the 8th District, the one and only Keith Parker, again, thank you for all you do and thank you for making sure the university has a presence in South LA. Not only the work that you all recognized for this year at Al Wooton Heritage Center, helping young people, which is not only in the district but very close to my house, but for years, when I was Executive Director of Community Coalition, you all helped facilitate a program that brought UCLA students to Community Coalition to tutor students in local high schools. That was very, very important because most of the students we work with didn't know anybody that looked like them or was from their neighborhood or had anything in common with them that went to college. And so not only did folks get good grades, they established relationships with people they could identify with who were college students. And in at least three of those years, we achieved 100% college acceptance rates for our seniors. And so thank you for all that you have done and anything we can help you to be active in the future, you can always count on us.
All right, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who is completely neutral on the crosstown rivalry, and I am, I am not neutral on the following, I'm not neutral in my gratitude for UCLA Volunteer Day. I am not neutral on the inspiration that I personally gained from all of the young people that volunteered to improve Sammy Lee Science Academy Elementary School in my district. And I'm not neutral on a strong opinion of the positive impact you are making in my district with this incredible day of volunteerism and all of the inspiring examples you give to young people across my district. This was one of my favorite days of the year in 2015, going to Sammy Lee Elementary School, and just being able to cross paths with the dozens and dozens of young people and hearing their stories from age 17, you know, on up, but not too far.
Vice Chancellor Keith Parker to say a few words and share some highlights from this year's Volunteer Day.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Corettsen. Councilmember, Council President Wesson, thank you for allowing us to come in today to commemorate some of our UCLA work and civic engagement. As all of you know, this was our 12th Annual UCLA Day in downtown where our volunteers who are doing work around homelessness came and met with each member of the city council or their staff, met with members of the Board of Supervisors and their staff. And so we're also commemorating our work with our 12th Annual UCLA Day in downtown. Carmen Healy and Marco Perez have been the coordinators of this year's program along with Yvette Bailey from our Community and Local Government Relations Staff. They've done an incredible job and we really thank Councilmember Wezar for participating in a panel with LA County Representative Phil Ansel to talk about both your council response to homelessness as well as the county's response to homelessness. So Councilmember Wezar, thank you very much. As a Bruin who gets lots of UCLA votes in Los Angeles rather than a Berkeley Bear where you get no votes, we appreciate your participation as always. We also again want to commemorate our 7th Annual Volunteer Day. Volunteer Day is made possible because of the contributions all of you make as council members. You not only provide us with bus support and you've done tremendous work, 68 of the buses that we needed this year, the council provided, but you also help us identify sites where our volunteers can go and do this important work. Volunteer Day is not the only day, though, that our volunteers are out. We're out in a program we call One Bus One Cause where we will go back to sites and we'll go to new sites. In fact, on Thanksgiving Day, one of our One Bus One Cause efforts will be at the West Los Angeles VA where we'll be doing, we'll be feeding veterans on Thanksgiving Day. So I want to introduce Shannon Reagan Hickman, who is our Director of our Volunteer Center, for a few words.
Thank you, Keith. Council President Wesson and members of the City Council, on behalf of the staff of the UCLA Volunteer Center and our volunteer leadership teams, I'm pleased to be with you today to say thank you and to share the success of our 7th Annual UCLA Volunteer Day. As you'll see in the impact reports we've given you, with 5,495 volunteers participating, the value of the work completed on Volunteer Day totals almost $725,000. But the work doesn't stop after Volunteer Day. We check in with each site after the day to make sure every community partner is completely satisfied with the quality of work, scheduling follow-up projects when needed. And our volunteers don't stop serving. Since that day, 300 volunteers have joined us on a One Bus One Cause project. 52 undergraduates have dedicated hours to tutoring campus employees through our ESL program, Project Spell. Many more have been referred to campus organizations or nonprofits who need assistance. And once they are engaged, we are seeing these Bruins emerge as leaders time and time again. So in fact, the impact of Volunteer Day lasts far beyond the few hours spent on-site that day. In the words of one of the principals at our partner elementary schools, "UCLA left more than murals and new paint. You left my students and families with hopes and dreams. This day of service generated lasting dreams of opportunity for my students." So thank you for your support of UCLA Volunteer Day, from site suggestions to providing transportation to serving on-site with us that day. We look forward to continued partnerships and service that will provide assistance to the people of Los Angeles while also inspiring future civic and community leaders. Go Bruins!
Thank you.
In your bags that are at your desk, you'll find a, and Mr. Sidil has displayed it, you'll find a photo from a site in your district where we did a volunteer project. You'll find a T-shirt that is from Volunteer Day and has our sponsors listed on the back. So each of you are on the back of our shirts that went to over 6,000 people as a sponsor. You'll also find, as Shannon mentioned, the impact report on where we were, what we accomplished, and what Volunteer Day really means in terms of service by UCLA. And finally, a cool pair of sunglasses. And so, again, my mother always told me, there's nothing worse than an ungrateful heart. We are very, very grateful to the work that you do and to the work that you help us to do. So as Shannon said, go Bruins! And Mr. Englander and Mr. Kocorian, who have ties to that other small school on the other side of town, we're going to kick some butt this weekend. Go Bruins!
You know, Mr. Coretts, we do have some other members that want to speak, so if you'd like for us to go in that direction now, we can.
Please.
Okay. And I just want to say this, thank you for all that you do. It's a pleasure for the council to work with you. And then just a word about Mr. Parker, Keith Parker, you've just been, it's, not only are you a class act, you really care, it's really obvious, and you've been very helpful to most of the members seated around his horseshoe and some that are serving in the Assembly and in Congress, so I give you a big salute. You rarely get recognized for all of the good work you do. Can we give Keith Parker a round of applause? He's a good leader. He's a good leader with a good team. Mr. Rue, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise today to recognize the 7th Annual UCLA Volunteer Day, but any chance I get to recognize my alma mater, UCLA, just want to say how great the school is, how I'm so fortunate that I was able to attend. And I think we're just talking with the Vice Chancellor, I think there are six members who attended UCLA? Almost a, almost a majority here at the City Council, so we just need two more graduates from UCLA, and you guys can get whatever you want. But I just, I'm so thankful to have been, had the privilege to attend the finest public institution of UCLA, and I owe everything that I am today to UCLA and anything I could do to support. And thank you, Mr. Coretts, for bringing UCLA to our attention today. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. Just briefly, UCLA has really left a lasting impact on Second Street Elementary School in Bull Heights. It showed those students that people are here that care about the school. But not only that, the volunteerism and the materials, but as we were talking with Keith earlier, it really left an impression on the students about what is possible and that college is possible for many of these students. So thank you so much. Keith and I have this ongoing joke that my undergraduate institution, UC Berkeley, that there's not many voters in my district. And Keith, I think I told you the story that it's true what you say. I get more votes because I went to UCLA than I went because I went to Cal. But when we do, when we run, we run polls, and we usually ask who you're voting for, and sometimes we get qualitative information, like why are you voting for this person? On two occasions, people responded because he went to UCLA. So you're right, I do get votes because I went to UCLA. Thanks for all your work. Volunteer Day is incredible. Thank you so much.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Coretts, for highlighting the work of the UCLA family. And to my constituent in the 8th District, the one and only Keith Parker, again, thank you for all you do and thank you for making sure the university has a presence in South LA. Not only the work that you all recognize for this year at Al Wooton Heritage Center, helping young people, which is not only in the district but very close to my house, but for years when I was Executive Director of Community Coalition, you all helped facilitate a program that brought UCLA students to Community Coalition, to tutor students in local high schools. That was very, very important because most of the students we work with didn't know anybody that looked like them or was from their neighborhood or had anything in common with them that went to college. And so not only did folks get good grades, they established relationships with people they could identify with who were college students. And in at least three of those years, we achieved 100% college acceptance rates for our seniors. And so thank you for all that you have done and anything we can help you to be active in the future, you can always count on us.
All right. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who is completely neutral on the crosstown rivalry, and I am, I am not neutral on the following, I'm not neutral in my gratitude for UCLA Volunteer Day. I am not neutral on the inspiration that I personally gained from all of the young people that volunteered to improve Sammy Lee Science Academy Elementary School in my district. And I'm not neutral on a strong opinion of the positive impact you are making in my district with this incredible day of volunteerism and all of the inspiring examples you give to young people across my district. This was one of my favorite days of the year in 2015, going to Sammy Lee Elementary School, and just being able to cross paths with the dozens and dozens of young people and hearing their stories from age 17, you know, on up, but not too far up. And also just the faculty and those that were chaperoning and in charge of the Volunteer Day of Service. It's a great program and you're improving this city in more ways than you may even realize. So I really thank you for this. It's one of the most, one of the best community-building endeavors that any educational institution can engage in. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Mr. Sidil.
I don't know if there's anything else that can be said. Thank you, Keith Parker, Marcos, thank you. Thank your entire team for your service. And let me say to the volunteers and your team, you're building not, you're not just contributing to the service and service to the city, but you're building future leaders. And the six that are here on the floor, Bruins are a testament to it. And I was speaking to, Mr. President, I was speaking to our former mayor yesterday about our great experiences at UCLA, and so you're just constantly building future leaders for the city, and for that, we thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sidil said he wasn't sure if there was anything left to be said. I'm certain there is nothing else left to be said, so let me just repeat, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, back to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, and now it's my honor to present UCLA with a certificate for their incredible 7th Annual Volunteer Day.
Mr. Herman, please. This is your second warning for disturbing this meeting, okay? I'm not going to warn you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job, UCLA.
Okay, again, congratulations, Mr. Parker and UCLA, thank you for all that you do. We'll now move to Item 11, Mr. Walsh, Item 11.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh confidential tweeting and tooting at Hollywood Dems. Please, no applause. Number 2011 concerns Ms. Julie Stromberg to the community, appointment to the Community Forest Advisory Committee. Well, it shouldn't be too much work there. I don't know any forests in LA, but again, we have checked her, as you recall, you have someone in prison now that you appointed for kiddie porn. Well, I think that she's about the least likely person in the world to be caught with kiddie porn, and so we're 100%. Remember, when you do a good job and pick someone like Ms. Julie Stromberg, we're the first to congratulate you. We have a lot of positive things to say about the city. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, please come back, we're on Item 14 now. Mr. Walsh passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Ms. Pierman, Donna Pierman, Item 17. Donna Pierman, Item 17.
Oh, yeah, I see this one.
Come on.
Yeah. This is not right here. Created two asset protections accounts for low and moderate income housing, $250,000, and Housing Production Revolving Fund to another $250,000, $500,000. No wonder our city is having so much problems, you know? This is not right. They should, spending so much money on this low and moderate housing, all of it, all the rents should be down so that everybody can afford it, so you don't just give it to a certain amount of people that they consider they're able to get it because they don't have jobs that are very, that pay well enough. So I'm going to keep this down to a minute, but I think you're overspending and basically so that you can say I'm off-topic, so you don't have that bad news video accomplishing. Thank you very much.
You are off-topic. Don't let me warn you again, Ms. Pierman. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Murphy, we're on Item 18, and also, Yoko. And I'll let you pronounce the last name for me.
Good morning, Mr. President. I am 18, I am against.
Thank you. Please come forward.
My name is Yoko Tsukioka, and I support number 18.
Thank you. All right. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Mr. Wezar?
Super fourth with, please, thank you.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, it's a request for a super fourth with, let's vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, let's move on to Item 28. Sean, called special by you, Item 28.
Yes, it's Sean Murphy, a resident of CD2. Item 28 is a roadmap. Roadmaps are fine, thanks.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go to Item 29. Item 29 is Ms. Donna Pierman, please come forward. Item 29.
Oh, yeah, here we go. It's on this one. Okay, this is, oh, yeah. You won't like what I have to say, but I still think that the reason that people are being murdered is because people are no longer able to protect themselves. And yes, there is a correlation between all the murders that are out here and the ability to be able to carry. And if people were able to carry, then people would be able to, then people would not be more apt to want to shoot people. And I also believe in the snitches take stitches because nobody is going to report these things because they don't, they don't want themselves murdered and they don't want also their families to be murdered. And I'm going to keep this down to a minute. You're not going to get it. You're not going to get people coming in. It ain't going to happen.
Thank you. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to move to Item 27. So Ms. Pierman, if you'd come back, we're on Item 27. And if we could get Mr. Herman and Mr. Walsh, yes, 27.
Okay, same thing with this one. We're also having the same problem. It's because we can't go, all these murders happen because people can't, won't have any ability to be able to protect themselves. So any of these people will, most likely, to go out there and shoot them if they think you can shoot back. And also, I said, I don't think you're going to get the rewards back because I don't think anybody's going to come on in because anybody who's willing to murder somebody is also willing to murder the person that called it in. Somehow, they'll find out who, where you are, and they'll go and murder you. So no one's going to get these rewards. I mean, I feel really bad for these people that get murdered, and I wish they would get those people and put them on, you know, death row. So, but it ain't going to happen. Sorry. Tough luck.
Okay, next.
Mr. Speaker Herman, I understand that you're identifying a person for the apprehension, for a conviction representing the responsibility of shooting, but you, Mr. ISIS yourself, have done nothing to support and resolve the problems of multiple shootings, stabbings, and criminal assaults here in the city of Los Angeles. So in my one minute of time, I'm going to use it wisely, Mr. ISIS, I-S-I-S.
You're off the topic, so just come on, stay on the topic.
So one minute, sir, I hold my time, screw it.
All right, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Herman, sit down, it's Mr. Walsh's time.
Jose Rodriguez shot to death, gang shooting, Wezar and England offering $50,000. As the T-shirt says, which you can, just Google "snitches get stitches," you'll see the T-shirt. Okay, let me, let's see, I have asked again and again for how much reward you've paid out in the last 20 years. Mr. Coretts came up with one reward, okay? None of others. That's, and that was a wealthy drunken white guy who ran over another wealthy drunken white guy in Century City. If it's between white and white and there's no gangs involved, maybe you'll catch someone. This is phony? I just wish that the, that we had a reward for the person who slashed Hollywood Highland, the Russian tourist, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Wezar, it's my understanding that the individual has been apprehended that did this thing, so this vote is to receive and file. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Followed by Mr. Walsh, Item 16.
I'd like to know more about what this is with the loan. They got $24,999, and I don't know what interest rate that they're giving these people, whether they're giving them below what everybody else would get. The fact that it's a loan is, that part's okay, and I'm not sure exactly why they're only giving them a six-month term. It seems rather quickly to spend the $24,999, so I don't even know if these people will, this Rosen, David Paul Rosen will be in associates or is going to be able to do this. So I hope they have a backup plan in case David Rosen doesn't pay back the $24,999. And I still love to know, what is the interest rate? So are they giving way a good deal? Have they due six months? I believe they are, and I'm going to leave it a minute, thank you.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Ms. McAllister.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Be very careful when you, look what it says here, a personal service agreement. That means it didn't go out for bid. That means it was an inside job. And what is personal services? We've got a lot of hookers on Hollywood Boulevard involved with personal services. This is a loan policy analysis for six months, and it's $24,999 because if it was $25,000, they would have had to go through a process that would have eliminated, may have eliminated David Paul Rosen. So it's only for $24,999. This $25,000 here, $25,000 there, and of course, the vote because of scumbags like Rue is that, there would be, nobody's going to challenge this.
Ms. McAllister.
Good morning, Mr. President. I object to this contract for $24,999 to David Paul Rosen and Associates. First of all, we need to bid on contracts, not just give them up like this. We have enough unemployed people in the city. Another thing, Mr. Rosen's company is in Irvine, California, so he's not even supporting Los Angeles as far as paying taxes on this money. Now, as far as what this means, for people who don't know, payments from residual receipts, if any, shall be made on an annual basis beginning the year first following the date of the project that's placed in service and each thereafter. Now, this is concerning affordable housing for people who don't know that. How can you hire somebody for $24,000, almost $25,000, when the city, the mayor, Garcetti, which we need to vote out of office, let 77 million go unspent this year for affordable housing? We don't need Mr. Rosen to do this analysis. We need you guys to do your job to build some affordable housing for people and quit doing all this analytical analysis. I think that we need new leadership. We don't need to give this to anyone, we need to put these up for bid. We need people in this city. There are a lot of qualified black people who can do this analysis. Mr. Rosen, I've looked up his resume, he has been in the White House, he had demand, is probably a billionaire. He has had all kinds of contracts. As a matter of fact, he is a energy efficiency and renewable energy finance so-called expert. So I don't know what he's doing with this analysis contract. Let's start bidding on stuff so people can get jobs in our city. We don't need to be giving people contracts all the way in Irvine, California, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go to Item 19. I think I have Sasha Throng and Patricia McAllister and Brian Barajas. This is on Item 19.
Okay, I'm speaking in, speaking in strong support of Item 19, and I'm requesting that this item be sent forthwith to the mayor in order to make a December 1st closing deadline set by the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Barajas, are you here? No, Ms. McAllister, you too, you're up. I just want this to move. Yes, sir.
Well, I think it's a good idea in general. Obviously, my statement before is, obviously, you're dealing with a homeless crisis, and I've already mentioned that you literally need a top-down approach. Housing is just part of this mission. In the long term, obviously, they're going to, you're going to have to amp up your, everything that goes in with that housing. They need to be provided with job, healthcare, and so on and so on. So first off, thank you, and there's plenty, plenty to do here, so.
Ms. McAllister.
I'm concerned, Mr. President, with any money that's being spent on Skid Row when Skid Row is 90% black and they're not getting the housing. I know for a fact that illegal aliens are being given this affordable housing.
Stay on the, stay on that subject.
They're being, they're being given these multifamily affordable rental housing units, and we need to get them out of there. Now, this money, if we can guarantee that 80% of this housing would go to African-Americans, I would support it. Other than that, it's just another scam to get people who don't qualify into this, into these housing units. Now, I think it's a shame that we have a city council and a mayor who, as I keep saying, and nobody is answering me or they act like they don't care, when I say that 77 million was supposed to be spent and you didn't spend it and HUD put you on probation, that money was for affordable housing. What are you doing, pocketing this money? Pocahontas?
Stay on this item, please.
Okay, I want to stay on this item. I disagree with this unless we can get a guarantee, unless we can get a guarantee that the black people that's laying on the ground down there in Skid Row about four blocks from where you're sitting, if they can get this housing, then I would agree with this. Other than that, I don't agree with it. You keep building this housing and putting people in there who don't qualify. We need some laws around here, but we do have the laws on the books. The problem is you all don't think you need to follow the laws. It's a governing society now in this nation and we're going to change that with President Trump.
Just stay on the...
Black lives matter.
Okay, you're off the subject. Okay, let's vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. President, super forthwith, please.
With, with, what'd you?
Forthwith, please.
Forthwith.
Super, super forthwith. There's such a thing.
Let's vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. I think forthwith would have, would have worked, but for you? Now we're going to vote for reconsideration on item twenty-three. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we're going to hold that for a moment. Okay, Mr. Weezer, we're going to move to, I think you have a few items. So which one would you like to take up first? I do have cards on twenty-one.
If we could do six, twenty-one, and twenty-two together, Mr. President. They're all related.
We'll do that.
And...
I was going to call a cards.
Okay.
Or do you want to wait till after?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Mr. Herman, Ms. Pierman, Mr. Walsh.
Most likely, I will not be off topic as I read this agenda. A continuation consideration of fucking public safety committee report relative to the fucking El Nino emergency preparedness plan for the fucking city of Los Angeles. A relative emergency fucking management for the property and educated residents of the potential El Nino, which is all of us. Now going to item twenty-one. Mr. Isis, here I go. Continued consideration of communication from the fucking director of Bureau of Sanitation and the general fucking manager of emergency management not prepared for the water destruction by El Nino based on storm drains, gutters, debris, basins, public utilities, drains, gutters, debris, and basins, public utilities, and other critical infrastructure. Now, Mr. President, as I engage on this El Nino, how does the El Nino impact the homeless who have no homes? How in the fuck are they to get off the streets and get into a home and not be affected by El Nino? Should I ask my councilmen who's left homeless people on the streets for a hundred fucking million dollars that you haven't spent?
Why don't you stay on, why don't you stay on the subject?
El Nino. And yet the drain basins are full of cacada and kapanada and pampada pula and you continue to run this city to the ground. Fix the infrastructure that you told the federal fucking government for money for that you're going to put into infrastructure. We've been waiting for it. It creates jobs. It puts homeless people in homes. It puts homeless people to work on El Nino. El Nino event, you call it. What fucking event? Let's get to the point, Dion. The Brown Act, 54954, parentheses B, says, "I will criticize you to the fullest extent of the law."
Stay on the subject. Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Ms. Pierman.
I'm going to be on the subject. This is preparing the city's storm drains, gutters, debris, basins. Let's see what we got here. Oh, yeah. Did you say, "Report the locations, approve the flooding." What causes flooding in the locations when appropriate and needed to prevent future flooding? This is very much needed. Yes, I walk on the streets and I constantly have trouble crossing the street because there's flooding around the area. So I actually, when you do something right, I'd say, also, just like John Walsh, I say you do it right. I'm hoping that you're doing it in a proper manner and that we have the, you know exactly how you're doing and not overspending so that you do it in the correct way so you don't have to go back and redo it again. That's all I want to do is you don't have to go back and redo it again because we have to do something on Nino. Oh, God forbid we ever got real rain. We haven't had it since 1979. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh tweeting at JWalshConfidential. Okay, @HollywoodDems. Okay, this concerns preparing for El Nino. You started much too late. And I just want to speak to anybody who lives in a black or an Hispanic neighborhood. They're not starting all over the city. They're starting where the skin color is my color. If you're white, that's all right. If you're brown, you can stay around. But if you're black, stay back, stay back, stay back.
Stay on topic, Mr. Walsh.
The topic is racism as far as preparing for El Nino. You are preparing. Where are the places that you're going to start? It isn't up here and you are just a white, your ass is white punk.
All right. Let's, oh, Mr. Murphy.
It's about time I filled out a card for item twenty-one. Item twenty-one, we need to clean the storm drains and get ready for the rains.
Mr. Weezer on item six.
Thank you, Madam President. And colleagues in public, we've heard quite a bit about El Nino and the things we need to do to start preparing. There's been some informational sessions throughout the city for, in terms of informing our residents about what we can do. But this came to light for us, particularly in Council District 14, when on October 19th, there was a focused but intense storm that somehow only hit Boyle Heights and downtown LA. Boyle Heights got flooded in several places and some of the storm drains got clogged and there was a real call for some action from the people in Boyle Heights. Boyle Heights has some of the oldest infrastructure in the city and we thought it'd be appropriate to ask our departments to come before city council to inform our council and the public about things they are doing to prepare for El Nino. And it's a great opportunity for any of us who have questions about what else we can be doing or to make requests at this time. So I'd like to ask the Bureau of Sanitation, the Emergency Management Department, and the Bureau of Street Services to please come up and make your presentation on what we are doing as a city to prepare our communities for what we expect with El Nino. Did I miss any bureau, any department, anything? Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. Pleased to be here to speak with you this morning. One of the things I'd like to say is that flooding nationally is the costliest and deadliest of all natural disasters, year in and year out. That, along with the scientists miraculously all actually coming in line in terms of the significance of a strong El Nino event between November of this year and February of next year, has caused several, in fact, most city departments to stand up and become better prepared, look at what we have in place in regards how the city will respond to, prepare for, and respond to an El Nino event. What we've done to date in partnership, especially with the bureaus of the Department of Public Works, primarily sanitation and street services, is we set up a series of town hall meetings. We held the first one in the Glassell Park area of the city, attended with over 100 people. It was a two-hour meeting, very interactive, very informative. The second one was held in Councilmember Bustaño's district, very well attended, again. And the next two, one will be held in the Westchester area and then Granada Hills. I'm sorry, Granada Hills. We also are adding another town hall meeting for Councilmember Bustaño, Councilmember Bonin's district for the Venice area. So we set up four basic two-hour town hall meetings in the four disaster management bureaus of the city and we, depending on the input from the community, we actually are adding additional ones. We'll hold Twitter town halls for those citizens who can't make it physically to the large-format town hall meetings. We've set up the El Nino, lost, elnino.la.com website to provide information for citizens throughout the city and we, like I said, we continue to put the messaging out across the city. At this time, what we, the plan is that within 72 hours of receiving a significant warning from the National Weather Service, the city's emergency operations center will go to level one. We'll convene a citywide operational conference call, communicate the severity of the warning from the National Weather Service. We started on November 9th with what we call our messaging over time, where we started to push out on various websites and through hard copy publications, preparedness information for the community. When we get to the 72-hour window, we'll actually begin to do what we call just-in-time messaging, more focused, more deliberate messaging that will focus on specific parts of the city that may be more adversely impacted. We've geomapped all the significant homeless encampments and compared that with the 100-year and 500-year floodplain information that we have and also working with sanitation, looking at streets, the traditional streets and intersections that have flooded significantly so we actually know where the potential hotspots will be. As we move forward and then EOC activation, once we get to level two or level three, we'll actually assign a recovery officer. In the off chance, the very bad chance that we actually get into a disaster declaration, we'll start the recovery process not later than two hours after we start a significant response effort from the city. We continue to meet. The mayor actually issued executive directive 14 a couple of weeks ago where he created a 13 department El Nino task force. We meet weekly. We met just the other day. We continue to meet and compare notes to see where the gaps are and where the successes are. At this time, the city is ready, but ready for us is not an end state, it's a continual state of being for us and I pass it on to my other colleagues.
Good morning, Adal Hashkili, Assistant General Manager for LA Sanitation. And I'll be also, Councilmember Weezer, I'll also address some of the questions that you've raised regarding the incident that happened in Boyle Heights. But I want to just assure the council and the public that LA Sanitation has been doing it since the early 90s. Every year, we prepare a wet weather preparedness and response plan. We go through our tabletop exercises. We go through our efforts to prepare our system, both the wastewater system and the storm drain system. And this year, with the anticipated El Nino, we actually have increased our preparedness and focused the efforts and we've worked with our sister departments to ensure that we are, our system is ready, but also that we're ready to respond and address any potential flooding. The city has, we have about 40,000 catch basins. All of them have been cleaned and we continue to clean them right now as we speak. We have actually cleaned our debris basins in the foothills and we continue to inspect them. The sewer system also have been inspected. We are preparing our facilities to ensure that we treat most wastewater through the system. As you know, the system has a design capacity, both the wastewater system and the storm drain system. The wastewater system is designed to handle a 10-year storm. A 10-year storm is about, close to four inches in 24 hours and about one inch in one hour. And the same thing with the storm drain system. The storm drain system is designed to carry flow for a 10-year design storm and the streets and the curb and gutter are part of the system. So our job is to ensure that there's no debris blocking the storm drain system and ensure the flow is going. As you know, in order to comply with our trash requirements, we actually installed screens across our catch basin screens and those are actually, although the public may see them stationary, that actually they activate when the rain and water is before that system because it has a counterbalance measure. When the water level rises, the system opens up, allows water to go through. So if people see that catch basin screen not moving, it's supposed to do its job. So I want to just assure the public that those catch basin screens operate and open during a rain. We have actually gone and had over 40 community meetings working with our sister departments. We are actually in response to what happened in Boyle Heights. As you know, the storm in Boyle Heights was actually a very heavy downpour. I think we had about a one inch of rain in half an hour, which is way beyond a 10-year storm. But really what caused the flooding problems was the debris that floated down. We had one area, we had a mattress around the area of Bernal, 551 Bernal, and a mattress actually blocked the storm drain system. And in the area around First and Cummings, we had actually a construction barricade that floated down and blocked that drain. So one of the things that we're doing this time is trying to figure out how we can work ourselves and also work with the residents across the city to work with us because one of the messages that we're saying is, doesn't matter how clean the catch basin is, if we have something that'll float down, it's going to block that storm drain. So we're asking is anticipation of the rain, let's make sure that we secure anything that can float down and that can block a storm drain off the property. Let's make sure nothing is in the way that can come down. We are actually working with our solid resources team in sanitation and working with the emergency management department to look for the first time about potentially suspending trash service in certain areas in the city if we anticipate there's a heavy downpour happening. We don't want the trash cans out on the street when rain happens because those trash cans, as we've seen in some flooding we had in San Pedro and Wilmington, Councilmember Bustaño, we had trash cans that floated down and basically the trash blocked and then the actual containers did. So this time, we're trying something different, but it starts with the public helping us. It starts with getting the information. Also, LA Sanitation has gone now with our customer service center to a 24/7 operation. So we are going to be operating our system 24/7 and receiving the calls. The only thing we ask is, when the public are calling, is during heavy rains, please restrict the calls to flood-related calls. We are basically, if anything is routine calls, please wait till the next day to call. If you're calling our hotline number, please do that only if it has to do with an emergency or a flood-related emergency. That would help us respond and be out there. Our staff are out there in the field, they're going to dispatch, they're going to go on 12-hour shifts. They'll be dispatched throughout the city, in the hotspots across the city to ensure that we have the fastest response. You know, we have, our staff are working hard every day, doesn't matter if it's rain or shine. And right now, one thing that we have done is we've looked at our, the analysis that we're doing as part of Clean Streets Initiative and looking at the areas of the city that has high potential of trash and looking at our areas that has potential of flooding and overlaying that. And that's the area we're going to focus on before and after the storm and we're going to be working very hard ensuring that these catch basins, these storm drain systems are being addressed. You know, there's some actually areas that we're actually going through and ensuring that in critical areas that we're opening the storm drains and ensuring there is no roots in the areas, in Hancock Park, for example, there's an area that floods all the time and a drain. That drain has been cleaned. We're cleaning areas in the different parts of the council district, areas that we ensure that they have the optimum capacity to carry the system. Although we're prepared, if the El Nino is what's expected, we're going to have issues, we're going to have flooding. We ask the public to stay away from flooded areas so in case we secure the area. We are going to be there responding. Public safety is our number one priority, but our staff will be there before the storm, during the storm, and after the storm to ensure that the city services, the public are protected because we are committed to providing the highest level of protection and our job and our mission is to protect the public health and the environment. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Ron Lorenzen, Assistant Director of Bureau of Street Services. I'd first just like to thank the emergency management department and Mr. Featherstone, particularly for fronting this effort and getting us all to work together coordinated. And I think that one of the best things that we are doing as a city is working as a unit, which I don't... which I don't know if that's actually ever happened quite to this extent. And particularly with the Bureau of Sanitation and the Bureau of Street Services, because we are so tightly woven together as far as attacking those problems that might occur in the streets specifically related to flooding. The Bureau of Street Services is, as Adele has indicated, is working together with the Bureau of Sanitation to ensure that the storm drain system and the city's flood control system work properly. In this effort, the Bureau of Street Services actually proactively swept all of the streets within the city in the month of October. Now, all of you know that all of the streets in the city are not swept on a weekly basis in the regular program. About two-thirds of the streets system is not swept. All of those streets have been swept. Depending on the weather and the storms that come through and what we see in the very near future, if we have to do that, we will again perform that so that we can keep the, particularly as leaf season starts, keep the leaves out of the system so that the storm system can work as it is supposed to work. In addition to that, the Bureau of Street Services assists the Los Angeles Fire Department directly by supplying sand to all of their fire stations that request it. We are receiving somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 requests weekly for sand and fire stations. We are working very closely with LAFD on that sand as well as communication with the Fire Department. One of the big problems the Bureau has is communication at nighttime, and we are working with the Los Angeles Fire Department to come up with a method that we can directly communicate with each other during these events, particularly in the evening hours. As far as the Bureau of Street Services is directly concerned, we are actually pre-staging equipment and necessary vehicles in those areas of the city that will be more mudslide-prone. That would be the areas around the bottom of canyons, Laurel, Mulholland, Topanga Canyon, Coldwater Canyon, Benedict Canyon, and Coldwater Canyon. Are, we have yards on both sides of the Santa Monica Mountains where we actually have pre-staged equipment in the effort to reduce response times if we do have mudslides. The Bureau actually anticipates that one of the biggest problems we're gonna have probably for most of this storm season is going to be tree failure and responding to tree, tree emergencies. Just to give you an idea, in the event we had a week ago, Sunday on the 15th, it was a small, very small storm that moved through very quickly. It didn't really rain in the city of Los Angeles. I live in the county. We actually had an inch and a half of rain that day, but beginning Sunday night until last Friday night, there were 1,000 tree locations, emergency requests. So you see from a very small event what can happen as far as trees go. We know because of the budget crisis in '09 and the deferred maintenance, that this is gonna be a little bit more of a problem. So I've been asked this in committee, and I will answer it again here, to address that situation, since we've been reduced so much across the board at the Bureau of Street Services, we actually have a plan in place that will actually use all of the resources across divisions in the Bureau to attack those areas that need to be directly attacked. We anticipate, as I said, that trees will be one of the number one things. In those events where we have rain, much of the resurfacing program and the slurring program stand down because of the wet weather, we will be utilizing all of those resources as needed, particularly as it relates to responding to tree-related emergencies. We have been participating in the four meetings that have been held in the public, and we again thank the emergency management department for performing those meetings. We actually will be activating our Bureau Operations Center during events, probably unilaterally, even if the EOC does not activate, so that we can more properly and more unified address the issues that we have pertaining to any one event. And lastly, I would just like to thank everybody, the council particularly, for being so in front of this issue. And like I said, I don't think that I've ever seen in my nearly 25 years at this city a coordinated effort as we have in this event. And if we do not have an event that is a 100- or 1,000-year event, I'm fairly confident, I think, along with emergency management, the Fire Department, and with the Bureau of Sanitation, that we can attack the issues.
Thank you, sir. We have three members on the queue. Mr. Biscayino?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for your report. I just hope and pray that these El Nino projections are wrong. But I do understand and respect the importance of ensuring that we are prepared and to ensure that there's greater cooperation and communication and a seamless response to, um, these types of emergencies. And I'm happy to hear, Mr. Featherstone, of your department of getting out on the city in all corners of the city, um, with your efforts in these types of town hall meetings to prepare our residents for the, these, uh, this potential emergency. Question on staffing levels. If you look, if you go back to the first El Nino, when it hit, um, when it hit the city of Los Angeles, um, explain to us what staffing levels were then and how would the Bureau plan on coping with emergencies with fewer people, um, less personnel on the streets, if, if, if and when El Nino hits?
Are you speaking to me, Councilman? Okay. The Bureau, as I mentioned real quickly, the Bureau of Street Services, to, to answer your first question, approximately 50 to 60% of our staff was reduced. We are in both street maintenance and urban forestry division, we are roughly half the resources we had in 1997. So to counteract that huge decrease in resources, as I've indicated, we are much better coordinated within the Bureau itself. We had a tendency, like most city agencies and most city departments, to be siloed and to stay in our own little area, and that even happened within the Bureau. So within the Bureau now, we actually have a plan in place amongst all of the divisions and how we're gonna respond to these emergencies as they come in. What groups will we be responding in the early stages? I'll give you an example. We, right now, the street maintenance division assists the urban forestry division on all recovery efforts for tree-related emergencies. As in last week's storm, as soon as the first response was completed and we had no more calls coming in, which by the way, we still have a few calls coming in, but the first response was largely finished, beginning yesterday, we had the street maintenance group as well as the special projects group assisting urban forestry with recovering. That means the actual picking up of the debris that's left on the street. As I sit here today, out of those almost 1,000 calls we had, there's less than 100 locations that actually, actually have to be recovered still. So that's the main thing we're doing, is working together across the entire Bureau. And as I mentioned, during rainstorms, the resurfacing division and the slurry operations do not operate because of the rain. So we will have a large pool of people, approximately 200 employees, to be able to supplant and to assist us in the first response and particularly in recovery efforts.
Good, good. As far as getting, making sure that we have a list of emergency on-call contractors who can supplement these efforts, um, especially as it relates to mud flows and, and fallen trees, um, you, you can assure us that we have adequate numbers of on-call contractors , um, ready to mobilize?
The, the Bureau of Street Services does not have an on-call contract.
How can we change that as we prepare?
We can change that in the future, but the Los Angeles Fire Department, it does have a contractor on-call. And I'm working with LAFD as we speak to make that contract available to us so that we can use them to supplant mainly the tree operations. We're fairly confident, unless we have a 1,000-year event where literally we have hillside sliding everywhere. But if we have what we saw in the 1997 event, we're confident at the Bureau that we have enough skilled equipment operators and the trucking assist that we need to promptly and effectively manage mudslides.
And, and lastly, for sanitation, Adele, the, um, we had an item Public Works Committee recently regarding the acquisition of, of property for the Venice pumping plant project. I leaned over to Mr. Bonin here earlier. Um, the report stated at the 1997, 1998 El Nino, the plant was severely overloaded and came within minutes of discharging untreated sewage into our Venice canals. Uh, if a sewage overflow does occur or anywhere else in the city, how can, um, sanitation respond to mitigate the health hazards?
Sure. Uh, let me, let me try to, first of all, take the opportunity to answer the first question on the staffing, uh, because I think it's critical for us.
On the what, I'm sorry?
On the staffing issue.
Staffing issue, yes.
Because you asked a question about staffing. Uh, that is, that's a critical element. I think we've seen probably at least 20 to 30% reduction in staff in our field staff. Um, and then in the stormwater staff right now that we have working, we have about, close to 30% vacancy right now in our positions. Uh, the good thing is, now it responds, since we have wastewater facilities and stormwater facilities, if there's a flood issues and emergencies, everybody is basically dispatched to respond. So all the staff we have in the wastewater side and the stormwater side are working together to address the issue. Uh, we have, we have emergency on-call contracts, we can actually get those done. Uh, the, the, what we are probably gonna be coming back to council is, as these emergencies happen, we're gonna use contractors and contracts to do repairs, and those will cost money. Currently, we don't have that in the budgets, and that will need some council appropriation that we'll come to. Um, the issue regarding wastewater, uh, conveyance, uh, regarding the Venice pump station in the Venice area, that's one of the most critical, uh, projects that we have and elements in the city. And it's, uh, right now, as you know, we are finally got a ability to go in and build this dual-force main, which is a second-force main that's being built, uh, to provide redundancy in that system. Um, and that will provide also capacity relief for the system. So finally, this investment is moving forward. Um, the second thing that we're working with the, uh, community and the council office, actually building a backup, uh, pump station, uh, in that area close to the Venice pumping plant to provide that redundancy. Because really, the amount of flow we see and the capacity of the system, uh, is, is, is something that we are concerned with. However, um, everything that we're doing, that's why we're asking the public, is when rain happens, uh, the wastewater system and the storm drain systems are separate. However, uh, there's a lot of connections, unintended connections between the storm drain system and the sewer system. We have 140,000, uh, maintenance hole covers in this city, and those are in the streets, and those will prevent, bring water. If you have flooding, it's gonna bring water into the sewer system. So normally, we see doubling of the flow when we have rain in the sewer system. So what we have done is actually prepared our facilities to ensure that they have, all the equipment is running. So the pump station, the Venice, has five pumps. Those are all ready to go. They're all, they have to be ready, and we have a backup system, uh, both in power, dual power. And, um, and we are working with the regional board. Actually, we met with the State Water Resource Control Board and, and the regional board here in Los Angeles, um, last week to have a discussion. The system, the wastewater system is designed for a 10-year storm. And, and, and any storm that can exceed that has a potential of overflows. And however, what we wanna do is be able to minimize that as much as possible. And the way we're gonna do it is try to maximize flow in the treatment plants. So, for example, treatment plant, we can push a lot more flow. The quality of the water coming out of it may not be as good as when we have dry weather. However, the issue probably will be better than having sewage coming out throughout the system. So, so we are coordinating very closely on how we're gonna do that. Uh, so if we have an overflow, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna contain it, we're gonna basically ensure that minimize the amount that reaches receiving waters. Uh, our staff will, uh, protect the public by securing the area, uh, and, uh, we will ensure that the system is, is, um, operating as best as we can. As you know, for the last 10 years, with your help and the council and the mayor, we've, and the public's, uh, support and through the sewer rate increases, we've actually upgraded the sewer system tremendously over the last 10 years. We've actually have done an amazing job. As you know, our sewer overflows have gone down from, eh, by 85% over the last 10 years, a lot of it because of the amount of investments. Communities in Eagle Rock and, and in, in, in South Los Angeles used to overflow every time we had a wet weather event. Those systems, we've done the upgrades on them. Uh, does that mean everything is gonna be okay? The answer is, if we have a severe, severe storm, we may have a concern. Our focus is to ensure that we minimize it and have the overflow happen in a controlled way. If it happens at the treatment plant, it's even better because we can contain it and treat it. Uh, and we can, we need to continue investing in our upgraded infrastructure. Uh, but the first thing is preparing our facilities. Our system has been cleaned, our sewers have been cleaned, our pumps are operational, our backup system is in place, and, uh, we will make everything possible to ensure that that system is operational.
And lastly, if I can, one last question. I know, I know, my time's over. Um, Mr. Featherstone, thank you for the work that you're doing. Happy to see everyone at the same table here, um, singing the same song. It's important that, that we owe that to our residents, in case this thing happens, we're ready to go and we're prepared. I also see our first responders here, Fire Department here, Police Department, thank you, God bless you. I know you guys are getting trained, ready to go, you are trained, getting ready to go to address this potential emergency. Um, on November 3rd, lightning struck, uh, the Harbor area, and we, within a half hour, we got three, um, reverse 911 calls sent to my home. We're gonna have the same program in place with these types of notifications throughout the city?
Yes, sir.
And then lastly, can you address the mobilization of the EOC, then I'll sit down?
Yes, sir. Um, yes, the city's notifyla.org, the mass communication system is in place, it's ready...
By the way, I signed up already.
Yes, sir. And we ask all the members of the city council to, uh, talk to your staffs, to your constituency, and ask everyone to sign up for notifyla.org. Uh, we have the ability right now to send out mass communication to all 911-capable land devices. However, most of us communicate on smartphones, so we, we need the, the citizens to sign up for notifyla.org so we can push the message out. We can literally notify one side of the street as opposed to the other side of the street. Uh, there's an issue going on right now out in Aliso Canyon. We've already scribed out the Porter Ranch area to send out a mass notification if necessary to that area. So, uh, to answer your question, yes, we do have that in place. We also have, uh, access to the, the wide, uh, wireless emergency alert system, which all current-generation 911, uh, smartphones have that capability on it. So we can actually capture cell towers and send a message out over that. That, uh, that's much more of a broad, not as definitive as, uh, notifyla.com. The, your second question was about...
Activation of the EOC.
The, the EOC, right now, the, the plan in place is to activate the EOC 72 hours out from any significant rain event. Uh, we're in constant communication with National Weather Service up in Oxnard. So as soon as we talk to Eric Bolt, the chief forecaster up there, uh, we will activate the EOC. Or at the request of any of the Emergency Operations Board, uh, city departments, they can actually request an activation of the EOC. One, uh, thing I would like to add, Councilmember, you asked my colleagues about, uh, on-call contractors. We actually have, uh, in fact, it was signed the same day of Executive Directive 14, what we call the mega-contract. We have two nationally-known, uh, contractors to come in. If we get to the point where we actually have a, uh, disaster declaration or a presidential declaration, we bring these, these companies in and they do debris removal, casualty power, casualty water, emergency tenting and feeding, those kind of things. So, once we exceed the capability, heaven forbid, of the city's workforce, their standing contracts, and we move into an actual disaster declaration process, we have the mega-contract process ready to trip.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, a few questions. One, I know we're trying to do outreach, I don't know if we've done enough yet to really penetrate the public consciousness yet. Um, so are we focusing on, particularly on, uh, the online website that people should go to, you know, in an emergency and, and prior to an emergency? And do we have, uh, a good list of tips both on that website? And are we looking at, uh, sending anything through DWP billings before El Nino really hits? Again, giving all the tips and best practices.
Yes, yes, Councilman. Thank you for asking that question. We, we, we're, uh, all of my colleagues here, my colleagues who, who aren't at the table, who represent their respective departments, through their information networking, we're leveraging all the networks out there, the respective council offices. We've been going around talking with the, uh, all the council members to leverage their networks to get the information out. Notifyla.org and elnino.la.com are the two big ones. Notifyla, I'm sorry, notifyla is for mass notification. Uh, elnino.la.com is, uh, is the website, very comprehensive website. It gives preparedness information, it gives what to do after we actually are in a storm, and those information, and, uh, those types of informations. And it also links us back to, uh, responsible departments for like trash collection, it will link, link the, uh, the user back to sanitation, tree, uh, downed trees, it links the user back to Ron's shop. Uh, so that, uh, we also, DWP's gonna put information on their bills, uh, and each website, all the city websites, all the departments we've been able to talk to, all 13 of the departments on the El Nino Task Force have put a link to, uh, elnino.la.com on their websites.
Very good. And, uh, I know in, in my district at least, I don't know how it is in the other districts, anytime we have a significant storm, power goes out in, in a good chunk of the district, uh, because we obviously have an old system, uh, that, that could use some help. Um, are we staffing up to be able to respond quickly to those incidents? How are we planning that?
The, we, we have, uh, my colleagues from DWP would have to answer the specifics, but they are at the table, they're a, a primary participant in the El Nino Task Force. Uh, they, they normally add on extra staffing in the event of a storm, especially, we have the, ironically, we have the advantage of, of... Especially, we have the, ironically, we have the advantage of forewarning with El Nino. Most of the disasters that we're teed up and ready to respond to are no-notice events. We almost have more warning than the Gulf states have for a hurricane in the sense that we know that this is a very real possibility. So with that opportunity to know in advance when the weather's actually coming, the response departments have all said that they will actually preposition and add on additional resources.
Okay. And we talked about flooding trashcans and other things that might block storm drains. What's the messaging that we want to get out? If there is something blocking a storm drain, do we want residents to actually go over there and pull it out? If so, I've never heard that said publicly. Also, if we get the message out to people not to put out their trash, and they've already done it, we also want to get the message to pull in the stuff off the street. Especially, there are some residents that leave their cans out 24/7 on the street. We particularly want to get the message to them to pull it in, I would think.
Yeah, councilman, I think that's the right point. I mean, we, one of the things that we want to make sure is that people do not put the trashcan out, but also if it's out, to bring it back in because it defeats the purpose. And we're going to basically use the notifyla system and the reverse 911 calls. We have the areas broken up to really focus on these areas. So the help is residents should help us in ensuring that if they're asked to pull back the trashcan, that they actually pull it back. So we're going to do, continue doing the outreach and the communication on that one. If you check your catch basin in front of your neighborhood, your house, if you see debris, I mean, to me, it's either let us know or you can remove it. If you need assistance in removing that debris, let us know. Our staff are ready. We've got calls across, you know, every day we're getting calls so we can go out and help. So let me, you can call 311 or call the 24/7 sanitation customer service center, 1-800-773-2489. 1-800-773-2489 or 311 for assistance in removing any of the debris. If you see anything that's blocking a storm drain, please help us. But the first thing is, what you have on your front yard and driveway, ensure that these things cannot float. Make sure you pull those back and help us take a look. We have some fact sheets that we've given, that we've prepared, that we're sharing with the community as to what to do to prepare your home, yourself, your family, but also how can you help. And we talked about downed power lines. One of the things that we want to make sure is people stay away from flooded intersections, stay away from downed power lines. And those are, safety of the public is our number-one priority. Let the experts come and address the issue. And, but the public can help us by letting us know what's there. And then also, we will, and holding back anything that could float down.
But if people are capable of removing it, we're not discouraging them from removing it themselves, correct?
No, I'm not discouraging them to. I mean, it's our responsibility as a, as a city, all of us have to work together. We're working very hard ensuring our catch basins and screens are clear. But if somebody sees something that they think needs to be removed, please help us because that could prevent an area from being flooded. So either remove it or call us.
And...
Mr. Corretts, I want to remind you on your time, there's another four members that wish to speak as well.
Okay, I'll try to ask two really quick questions, then I'll be done. One, when we've had these kinds of problems in the past, we have a lot of downed trees. We go out and cut them pretty quickly, but then we often have left piles of cut-up trees for a month, six weeks. Are we focusing on this and is there an ability to remove the debris more quickly this time?
Yes, councilman. As I indicated earlier, as an example, the storm of 11:15, we could go last Sunday. By Friday, we had nearly 1,000 calls. Of those 1,000 locations, as we sit here today, approximately 915 have already been recovered. So they've been completed. So to answer your question, we made a concerted effort to work as a group at the Bureau to be able to recover those locations much quicker. And we anticipate that we will be able to do so unless, as the other agencies have indicated, we have storms that are massive.
And one last quick question. I understand that if we use our own water at the same time as substantial El Nino is happening, we make things worse. So I wonder if we should have sort of a flex-your-power-style message about water that at certain times, we want you to absolutely stop using water. Stop flushing your toilets, stop washing your dishes, you know, take a few hours and just stop using all water because I understand that would be substantially helpful to us.
Councilman, one of the things that we recommend is that 72 hours before the storm, turn your sprinklers off. And in 72 hours, don't use them until 72 hours after the storm.
But beyond just landscaping, that we can just stop using water to the extent you can for a couple days?
Yeah, I think, I think goes back to the question, discussion we had with Councilman Buscaino regarding the sewer system. We need to reserve the sewer system capacity as much as possible to the runoff and the sewage. So if you are doing your laundry and it's raining, please don't do that. If you have anything that you don't want to flush down the toilet, it's not necessary. I'm not going to tell you basically not to use your facilities. Please use them. However, stuff like, you know, laundry, anything that is, you know, doing your dishes, et cetera, please postpone that till after the rain because that would reserve as much capacity in the system as possible. And I want to just remind the public that this is, does not take away our and your efforts and the city's efforts to remind everyone that we're still in a drought, that we need to continue thinking about how we can be, conserve water both inside the house and outside and also eventually for us to make the city resilient and sustainable and address a lot of these potential flooding in the future. It's all about how we are going to transform the city to a city that captures more runoff, infiltrates more runoff.
Sir, I need to move on to the next speaker. We also encourage the public to use common sense as well. Let's move on to Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, councilmembers Weisar and Buscaino, for your leadership on this important issue. And thank you, gentlemen, for conveying that the city is very well-prepared for El Nino. Oftentimes, the first line of defense is sandbagging when there's an initial flood or heavy rains. And it came to my attention last weekend in Elysian Valley that the nearest fire department is already out of sandbags or doesn't have sand or doesn't have sandbags. So this might be a question for the fire department, but I'm very interested in making sure that across my district, there's plenty of sand and plenty of sandbags. And I'm also willing to help contribute to a fund if there's a shortage because I think it's, you know, getting information out is one thing and it's of paramount importance. But constituents across the city are perfectly willing and ready to take preventative measures around their own homes, around their own properties. So is there enough sand? Will there be enough sand? Will there be enough sandbags? And can we help with making it more available in our districts?
So, thank you for the question, councilman. To our knowledge, the 102 of the 100, 104 of the 106 fire stations do have sandbags. They've actually, in my conversations with colleagues at Fire, they've actually ordered, I think it's over, close to a half a million additional sandbags in anticipation of El Nino. Every station will have sandbags. Not every station will have sand. And it's a matter of logistics. And those, the list of stations that have sandbags and sand is actually on the fire department's website and on the EMD website.
Because when a storm hits, you need the sandbags, you need them to be ready.
Yes, sir.
So are we really ready with sandbags? And this preparation for El Nino, the millions of extra pounds of sand this year, how is that in comparison to normal years in terms of quantity?
I don't know, I think, but it's significantly more.
So we've ramped up?
Yes, sir. Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that there are thousands and thousands of sandbags ready when the first storm hits.
Yes, sir.
How can we help with that if need be?
I'm very confident in my colleagues with Fire that there will be enough sandbags and with these gentlemen, there will be enough sand. I think you could help us if, we actually have information on how to fill sandbags, the proper way to place them. If your office and your colleagues' offices can help us get the information out. One, where the sandbags are, where the sand is, and also how to fill them. There's a way to fill them that actually matters. But I think that, you know, we, the, when, the fire station where your constituents went to that ran out of sandbags, it's probably just before the big El Nino surge in terms of actually stockpiling sandbags was put in place. But we will have enough sandbags.
Okay. And please do keep in mind that I'm perfectly willing to create staging sites in neighborhoods that aren't so easily accessible to the nearest fire station.
And that's, I think that's an excellent point, councilman, because I think what we have now, the distribution network and the prepositioning is a point of departure. And once we see more of where the actual impact will be, we certainly will be agile enough to shift and having specific staging points. Basically, you and your staff are the eyes for the disaster in your particular district. So we definitely appreciate that feedback and where we can be most effective in terms of prepositioning supplies.
Okay. Just want to make sure that there are plenty of sandbags for the first rainstorm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, guys, for coming out and giving us this wonderful presentation. And Jim Featherstone, thank you so much. It was great seeing you last Saturday at your offices when you did the Neighborhood Council Alliance's emergency preparedness kickoff. It was a great turnout. I think it was about representation from about 45 different neighborhood councils, I mean, 45 members from neighborhood councils. And that was great. Just a quick question. Well, just to follow up on Councilmember O'Farrell's question about sandbags, sand, sandbags, how to fill it, it's all at the elnino.la, elnino.la.org website, right? All that information?
Elnino.la.com.
Elnino.la, right, dot com. Apologies. So it's all, we could get it all there, right?
Yes, sir.
Great. I wanted to ask, how many individuals have signed up on the El Nino website as well as the notifyla website to date?
So notifyla, we have, since the mayor came out with Executive Directive 14, we've had 3,400 signups. And so that's been a little bit over, it's just under two weeks, I believe. We've had 3,400 signups. Up to that point, we had about 30,000. And this is, we have a continual messaging campaign. So we need the citizens to help us, help them be better informed by having more participation in signing up for notifyla.org.
Great. I mean, everywhere I go, I publicize the website and ask people to sign up. And, you know, as we get closer to El Nino, are you going, do you have any, do all of you guys have any plans to change the frequency of outreach or change the message or, you know, is it, can you?
We have much more pointed and much stronger messaging, certainly once we get in within the 72-hour window because the actual intensity and the focus of the messaging increases at 72, 48, 24 hours out. It's actually becomes more tailored towards specific communities where they may be more at risk than other communities.
Yeah. And I know, remember having that discussion with you because I wanted to start El Nino preparation three months ago. And you told us, I remember you telling me, it's actually still fire season and we want people to focus on that. And I guess the rain is projected to start in January, February?
Well, we've been working with a November-through-February window, but that's a very conservative window. We'd rather be over-prepared than under-prepared. And in terms of the messaging, and when we were talking, the, all of us have, it's a finite vessel we have for preparedness information. So we always have to do a balancing act, whether it's the, you know, we're asking the community to be ready for always the earthquake, but then fire season and now El Nino, and then with the issues in Paris, now we have a whole public safety concern. So we have to be careful on how we, how much information, how much preparedness information we actually can get to the public.
We're doing social media. I mean, working on, I mean, this is the new thing that we're trying to, you know, Twitter, Facebook, et cetera. And we're trying to target specific messages. And we have some of that already developed and it's going to be going out just before the storm comes, a couple of days before, as we get the warning. So using the social media is going to be a very effective tool for us to get the word out.
Great. You know, I'm very much looking forward to the town hall in my district on December 7th. That's Gardner Street School, elementary school. And like Councilman Buscaino, I am very concerned. I mean, the weather reports are confirming that it's going to be a big one. And I remember at the Saturday forum, you did say, no matter how prepared we are, I mean, if it's the big one, it's going to be difficult for all of us. And I love what you said, Assistant GM Hotch Kuziel, about citizen participation. If you see a trashcan that's tipped over, pick it up, you know? If you see something that looks like it potentially clogged a storm drain, you know, pick it up. And I'll start including that in my messages when I get to go to my community groups. But thank you so much. I'm very, I feel confident, but of course, I love your conservative approach. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Sadio?
I don't know. I appreciate everything that you've done and everything that you're doing for the city. I have only one question, and that is, what preparations have been done for the 20,000 residents that sleep on the streets every night? There was a very specific editorial in the LA Times yesterday by Gary Blazy, who's spent his life addressing this matter and what, there were recommendations that were put forth. How are we addressing this?
So, Councilmember Sadio, one of the things we've done is we, with the help of the police department and the fire department, we've actually mapped all the significant homeless encampments. So we've actually, we've overlaid that data on our risk map, our flood map, to see which ones would be most impacted by flooding overall or flooding in a specific area. We also have planned to open the shelters, the city-run shelters, earlier than we would normally for, and actually working with the agencies that assist the homeless and working with the fire department and police department, actually to attempt to get the folks who inhabit the homeless encampments to evacuate much earlier than we would. Because it, you know, once the rains actually begin to fall, it may be too late because of the escalation in emergencies. But we've mapped the homeless, we know where most of the major homeless encampments are. We know what shelters are proximal to these encampments. We've also looked at what risk, whatever predictable risk we're able to assess right now, whether it's along the river or the flood channels or in the 100- and 500-year flood plains.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, gentlemen, I just want to thank you for your, for your service and for your spirit of collaboration here this morning. I think that's a good sign and I think a good sign of things to come. You know, I've got some parts of my district where there are no sidewalks. It's pretty scary during, during non-wet times. Other areas where the flooding is just, you know, apparently unmanageable, going all on the sidewalks into the, into the areas, near schools, retail areas, public areas. Is this Nino a time for us to sort of move those intersections up on the map in terms of attention for repair? I've got about five or six locations that it's just, you know, it's an ongoing tragedy when it rains. Even the smallest bit of rain floods the sidewalk, floods the streets, makes it impossible for people to pass, and just totally disrupts life as we know it. And so, in anticipation of an El Nino affair that could be, you know, doubly dramatic, what steps can we take to at least identify and correct those locations that we know are going to be a problem?
Just, we would like, if you have a location that's of a concern, please communicate that to us. We'll investigate, see what we need to do, either in the interim or long term. We need to add it to our capital program if that's something that needs to be done. But provide that locations through your staff. Councilman will be more than happy to take a look at them as we've, it's open to any of the council members here. If you know of any concern, any area, please let us know. We will go out there to assess and ensure that if there's something, we can do now. But really, it's a long-term investment that the city has to look into, into the stormwater, our infrastructure investment. You know, we have not invested in stormwater in a long, long time. Stormwater conveyance, stormwater capture, and we need to look at those and work through it. I mean, we've done a plan for stormwater capture as part of our compliance with stormwater. It's going to address flooding, but also we have a lot of locations in the city that needs to be upgraded. And we need to have a discussion of investment in the infrastructure because it's going to improve the quality of life in our communities as we are doing with the CSI and other things.
Absolutely.
You know, this is not just protecting the public. You know, this is not just protecting the public quality of life, but also protecting public health and safety. So those are critical, we'll look to have a, hopefully, long-term dialogue on how we invest, but on those specific issues, please let us know as the other council offices.
We'll give the permission to you, because, right, these are longstanding problems. This is not just recent.
Sure. We'll reach out to your staff also to make sure that we hear.
But we're very concerned about it, and it does negatively impact citizens who live near there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer to close?
Thank you very much to the departments. This was certainly informative and enlightening, and we could do as much preparation as we hope to do, but at the end of the day, when that time comes, we not only want to be prepared in terms of having resources available, but it comes down to how will the public be able to communicate with us about those areas that need additional attention. One of the first ways that the public will think about is to call 311. And unfortunately, we only have a twelve-hour service right now for 311, and storms may come at midnight or after dark, 2:00 AM. So I put in a motion today that asks for a report back on the possibility of staffing 311 in the time Nino comes by on a twenty-four-hour basis, and also to look at the resources available to 311. I understand that if somebody calls and says, hey, there's a flood, they send it to Bureau of Sanitation, you have one person responding, maybe, or we're not quite sure how many people are available at the time as a 311 contact. Is that accurate or not?
And sanitation, we're actually going with our customer service center, that I gave the number, we have twenty-four-seven operation. Our staff will be available and responding around the clock, so we have staff in anticipation of a storm, we go on twelve-hour shifts, people are around the clock responding. I think the concern is, that I think that's what we heard from the community, is calling after-hours to 311 and not being able to get somebody and having the call be transferred. But rest assured, sanitation's customer service center, it will be staffed twenty-four-seven, fully staffed, and our staff will be out in the field as our sister departments on a twelve-hour shift, working around the clock.
So on your end, you'll be staffed, it's the 311 that we should be concerned with, there are only twelve hours at service, I believe, so we'll get that report back to see what we can do. So thank you so much, and we look forward to having a continued conversation on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. There are no more cards on item six, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to item twenty-three.
For item twenty-three, a substitute motion has been circulated.
Great, I have one card. Mr. Hunt? Are you here?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to clarify.
He is not in the room, Mr. Hunt's not in the room, so that concludes cards. Let's take up the first vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the vote, I'm sorry, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that vote was on whether to substitute.
Great, now let's take up the item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, item passes. Let's move on to item twenty. Yes, Miss, fourth with for Mr. Rue. Item twenty, Madam Clerk?
Item twenty, call special for cards.
Mr. John Walsh, item twenty.
Good morning. Always a pleasure to speak in front of you. This concerns the temporary closure of Golden Avenue between James M. Wood, head of the CRA, the late CRA, and Eighth Place. This is in a predominantly Hispanic area. The cops cannot control this area. They are ceding it to the gangs. It is now gang territory. The cops pull back. We didn't see the cops when the Russian tourist was stabbed at Hollywood and Highland. I've never seen this before, and I've been here since sixty-six. Sequa, the quality of life is so low. Serious and continual criminal activities in the street recommended foreclosure. Oh my God. HollywoodHighlands.org.
I'm okay.
Morning.
Good morning, Councilman. Gary Cook, Plumbers Local Seventy-Eight. We've been located in the Los Angeles area for almost one hundred and thirty-five years and proud of it. We stand in support of the next, of the problem.
Thank you, Gary. Bertha Woolridge? Bertha, not here. Officer Amanda Serrano?
My name is Bertha Woolridge, and I am in support of the eight-hundred block of Golden Avenue and James M. Wood. As of the time, we changed the quality of life in that corner is really very bad for our community, and I support the LAPD. Also, I support our Council District One, Sadio's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Officer Amanda Serrano from Rampart Division, and I'm here also to speak in favor of the closure. We believe that this will assist the officers in dealing with a situation that's on Golden. It will also benefit the businesses and residents that are in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terri Bowers? Terri Bowers? Terri?
I will cede my time to Mr. Kong.
We don't yield time, so do you have a card filled out, sir?
I have a card, I turned in a card.
And what was your name?
Andy Kong.
Yeah, I've got you next. So, if, Mr. Bowers, if you don't want to speak, then Andy, you can.
I'll speak. Councilmembers, I'm here for, or on behalf of McGolden, one of the abiding property owners. And McGolden is okay with the proposal or the agenda in principle, but there's a few gaping holes that need to be addressed. But before I turn to that, I wanted to step back and kind of verbally illustrate the layout of the avenue. Golden Avenue is kind of like a cul-de-sac, UPS and plumbers unions on the entrance, and McGolden's on the end of the cul-de-sac. So the issue becomes, if the city is kind of ceding control of the avenue to the abiding property owners to maintain it, how will that be maintained? How will the cost be shared? How will the liability issue be addressed? And who will control entrance-exit? And when the temporary closure is lifted, who will be in that process of removing the fencing, what have you? These aren't addressed in the city's resolution. I don't know if the city wanted abiding property owners to caucus themselves, but I think they need to be addressed in hand-in-hand with the city. There was one other housekeeping issue. I know I saw a consent form that was signed by two of the three property owners, one with the plumbers union, the other with UPS. Doesn't seem like a person with authority would, to buy in UPS, sign that consent form, so that I just wanted to raise that issue, too. If the council has any questions for me, I'm happy to address them.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Herman?
Got your call. I got your call, Mr. Al. Now, we're talking about the business of the city here in regards to removing property that belongs to you, the taxpayers. And so, in conjunction to James M. Wood Boulevard, what do you have to say about that, Mr. Speaker? Are you saying that your racist attitude towards the community there is exempt? I'm on topic. I'm on topic. That's why I brought my banana for the banana show here today. One banana fits all. But the problem here, as John Walsh brought out and many other speakers, is that the public had no say-so. Had no say-so. So within my one minute, as I've always told you, say no to the Olympics and vote no for Mitch Inglis.
Okay, you're off-topic. Thank you very much, sir. And Mr. Hunt? Did you wish to speak? Okay. All right, so that concludes the cards for that item. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk?
At least, item one, call special for cards. Item one, there's a request to continue item one G to January twelfth.
And that'll be the order, one G to January twelfth, without objection. Thank you very much. Patricia McAllister?
I think we need to, as committee members, you need to come up with new ideas and stop following the same trend of forty, fifty years ago. We have enough people on the street. We don't need these fines and liens on people's properties. We need a way to have a program where people can go and fix these violations that people have. Evidently, they can't afford to fix it, they wouldn't be on this list. So I think we need to come up with some ideas. We don't need any more people on the street, and when we vote for you guys, we vote for you to use your head, not your pockets. Okay? Use your head and show some sort of compassion, because most of you are a couple of paychecks from the homeless yourselves. And only nine percent of the people are voting the last election. That means we're tired of you.
You're not on the subject, Madam. You've got to stay on the subject, Madam.
Excuse me, I'm on the subject here of, I am on the subject of housing, people losing their houses. Come up with some ideas, use your brain and quit stuffing your pockets.
You have to object to these liens, everyone. Charles right here, Charles knows it, I'm going to pay him a banana to waive all the illegal liens due to the illegal due process that you neglected to provide to your customers, which are the stakeholders, the fucking taxpayers who are totally against the opposition of liens for compliance of code, fucking violations, and annual fucking inspections costs pursuant to the Los Angeles Municipal Code, LAMC, code? What the fuck's going on? People need to have a home. People need to have a home, not create homelessness, you bunch of chongos, or in English, monkeys. And monkeys deserve the banana of the day because the city attorney is not enforcing the due process and violating the rights of many constituents. I demand a hold on all these items until they are heard by the public. Thank you. I object.
Okay, do we have Steve Pombidam? Please come forward, and then Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Council. My name is Steve Pombidam, I'm here on behalf of Deutsche Bank National Trust Company as trustee for Morgan Stanley ABS Capital Inc. Trust Two Thousand Seven dash HG2. I'm only here with respect to the property in item number one A. Our client took title to the property in August of two thousand and fifteen, and actually, my understanding from Mr. Kalibala this morning is that, from the Department of Business and Safety, is that based on documentation provided, no lien will be imposed. So on that basis, our client just wanted to thank the council for taking into account the change in ownership. As long as there's no lien being imposed, we have no further objection. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
All right, let's prepare to vote.
Let's open the roll, close the roll. Oh, in fact, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, were you supposed to make an announcement?
Yes, Mr. President, the item before, before council is item one A, which is received and filed inasmuch as the property ownership has changed.
Okay, so now, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings council to general public comment.
Ms. Peirman? Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Sean Murphy, please come forward.
Let me just write the time, okay? This is twelve oh seven, okay? All the Syrians, ten thousand, that Mayor Garcetti is bringing is endangering our public safety when I need Donald Trump for president. I want to make clear, I do not want anyone to touch a hair on Barack Obama in any way, Mr. Senior Attorney. I wanted to see him alive and well, so he can see exactly all the damage he has done with ISIS, Iran, Syrian refugees, and other radicals, and be tried in a jury trial. Do not vote for Hillary, she's exactly like Obama, crooked and mean. Do not vote for Marco Rubio, he's soft on amnesty, he's a danger to the U.S. Do not vote for Huckabee, he's raised too much taxes in Arkansas. Mr. Mayor Garcetti, how dare you accept ten thousand Syrians without a background check, knowing who they are, along with young Muslim males who don't need sanctuary? Let's get them on your block. You've spent over thirty-five million on Westfield.
Thank you.
Later on, I'll tell you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Murphy, followed by Ms. McAllister. Yes?
You're recording votes when there's nobody in the seat. You did it on number sixteen for Mr. Rue. You did this, you don't have to be in the seat, it's an automatic yes for Rue. We'll see, cocksucker, whether I'm the liar or you are, Mr. Cocksucker Rue. Okay, let me tell you right now, a Russian tourist was stabbed, almost to death. NYPD came in and rescued him. We are asking, this is at Hollywood Highland, we are asking you and the mayor and the governor to apologize to Vladimir Putin for somebody being slashed. At Hollywood and Highland, now you have an ex-cross street. This type of cross street was eliminated and banned in Pasadena. You want to kill us, and now you're giving up the streets to the gangs. What fucking scumbags you are, and there's no bigger scumbag than white boy Rue.
Mr. City Attorney?
The Speaker has a right to use intensifiers pursuant to Judge Prager's ruling, however, he should not be, he should not be calling council members names.
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Yeah, I want to wish my fans Happy Thanksgiving. Lake of Shima Mopar gets flooded. I think you know about it, Mr. Rue. It gets flooded, something needs to be done about that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McAllister?
Thank you, Mr. President. The vast homelessness of African-Americans in California is the same throughout the U.S. There's clearly a Holocaust against African-Americans, which includes racist redneck cops killing innocent blacks. Now, these whites aren't white supremacists. I am a supporter of Black Lives Matter. Last night, Monday, November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, three white supremacists shot five peaceful Black Lives Matter protesters. Blacks must start shooting these white racists back. If you don't have weapons at the time, chase those white supremacists down, crack their skulls, cut their hearts out, making sure you kill them. This is called self-defense. The black politicians who get elected by black votes and do nothing to help blacks, blacks will start dealing with you, to make you too scared to sell us off. This is just a warning. You're going to be too scared to even run. That's the way it's going to be very shortly. Donald Trump for president, let's get these wetbacks out of this country.
All righty. Mr. Hunt? Mr. Barajas? Mr. Herman?
After being arrested seventy-one times, I got a vending ordinance ticket. If you go to YouTube and you go to Butterman Venice, you'll see a million cops around the butter stand. I have a seller's permit to sell out Venice Beach, and it's very ironic because it's called Garden of Eve, and I had it for the last, what, five or six years? And they arrest me for, and this is one of the reasons why I'm down here. And they arrest me for, and this is one of the reasons why I'm down here. I got a $100 ticket that's costing the city $180,000 and another $2 million in federal court after the documents is all said and done. You guys want to do it again? The right to due process, I have a seller's permit, and still being arrested, arrested 71 times after becoming a Ninth Circuit winner.
Mr. Barajas, I don't see, oh yeah, there you are. Brian, come forward.
Well, on, on our website, laurichpack.com, no peace until the British monarchy is overthrown. British puppet Obama is an asshole. Now, one of the ways that our organization has fun is attacking the bastards directly. Obviously, the Crown Prince Philip with Prince Charles are planning for this Copenhagen event in November, which is just depopulation by assuming that mankind is the problem. Little do they know that the galaxy that we live in produces phenomenon that changes the weather patterns around the universe, shall we say. Now, directly speaking is basically, we need a future. We have Glass-Steagall, but we have a president that serves the British Empire as such. He needs to be removed. We need to shut down Wall Street. These are the means and ways we should live by.
Obviously, you chongos don't believe in Black Lives Matter. That's why this banana still remains in my hand to feed the chongos who are suppressing the public with illegal liens, who is intoxicating the people in the North Ridge area with the gas leak. How fucking dumb does that get? A whole month and you can't figure out you have a gas leak? Take your children there to play, morons? Get on the ball and do something that's going to actually be positive to make things better, not like Frenethis who doesn't want to accept the criticism. Dion, turn around, Dion, while I speak, because I have the floor. It's general public comment, and I'm not using intensifiers, Dion, for this fucking banana show here. I'm not talking about any specific a-hole, other than the ones that don't know how to sit on the porcelain toilet and flush it twice like Mr. Peppa Pig. My Peppa Pig only flush it once.
Thank you. Your time's expired.
Thank.
Okay, what, what else? That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted, they are referred.
That clears us.
Announcements, members, announcements. If all could please rise for adjourning motions. If everyone in the chambers could please rise for adjourning motions. I'm looking to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask the body to adjourn in the memory of Joseph Timothy Shaw. Mr. Shaw was born in 1947 and deceased this past October 31st. He resided on Dalton Avenue in the 8th District during his childhood and adolescence year. His family home remained at Dalton, just south of Florence. He attended Horace Mann Junior High School, George Washington High School, and Gardena High School. He was a premier varsity basketball and football player. He was also an instrumental volunteer for a host of Council District 8 activities, including his services at our annual July 4th block parties. His funeral services will be on Saturday, were on Saturday, the 21st, at Lighthouse Mortuary on 164th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm still looking to my left, Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two quick ones. I'd like to ask the council that we adjourn in memory of Paul Purdy. Sad to be to announce the passing of Paul Purdy. He was born on, on June 13th, 1953, to Walter Marion Purdy at North Hollywood Maternity Hospital. He attended Panerano Baptist Elementary School, Sepulveda Junior High, Monroe High School. His musical career started when he would sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer over the loudspeaker at Builders Emporium when he was 18 months old, where he'd shop with his grandparents. He sang on the choir at LA Valley College and church and earned his BA in teaching credential from, in music, from CSUN. His employers included the Broadway Department Store, Panerano Baptist Church, Dodger Stadium, where he worked as an usher and ticket taker, and Valley Presbyterian Hospital. In 1975, he married Molly Walsh, and they had two sons, Christopher and Paul, with whom their father would throw concerts at home using a recorder and piano. Paul Purdy taught a choir director, as choir director, rather, at Garfield High and as a music, athletic director and the dean of students there. He also earned an MA in administrative credential at the University of Laverne. He later went on to become a band teacher and assistant principal at San Pedro High School and eventually focused solely on the band due to his love for music. The band was involved with most community events. They played at Norwegian Independence Day, Labor Day parades, well of a day, the LA Marathon, openings of restaurants and ships coming into the harbor. In addition, there were always many students involved with the all-city marching band. He impacted so many students at San Pedro High School with the band program there. At San Pedro, he started the tradition of making cheesecakes for his senior band students and was known for being an avid fundraiser for the band. He has been reunited with his father, his younger brother and sister, and numerous others who preceded him to heaven. May Paul Purdy rest in peace. And lastly, Feliz Diaz Alvarez, passed away July 14th at home. He was born on November 20th, 1915, survived by his wife Juanita, sons Paul, Larry, Felix, Max, and daughters Isabel, Mary, Becky, and daughter-in-law Andrea, along with numerous grandkids, great-grandkids, and great-great-grandkids. He is preceded in death by his children Richard, Henry, and Patricia, all three brothers. He served on the Civilian Conservation Corps and U.S. Army at Fort MacArthur. He was also a member of the ILW Local 13 and an active pensioner, volunteered at Kaiser Hospital in Harbor City, contributed to many charities, and member of the VFW in Wilmington. Funeral mass was held at St. Philomena Church in Carson and bureau, burial, burial, burial at Green Hills. May he rest in peace.
Okay, I'm still looking to my left now. Go to my right, on Mr. Caretz's, Mr. Rue's side. I do not see. Okay, members, before I adjourn, we do want to acknowledge that today is the birthday of our city clerk, Holly Walcott. So Holly, happy birthday. With that said, we are adjourned.